To get started, counsel, I want to welcome everybody to January 26th meeting. And I'd like to tell everybody good evening. And will could we please stand and join me to the opening prayer for Mr. Lester and we'll follow that by the pledge allegiance of the flag?
Thank you. Somebody unmuted me. I wasn't able to do that myself for some reason.
Okay, no problem.
Yes, will you join me in prayer? Healing God, we give you thanks for the work of all those who developed and are distributing the COVID vaccine, especially the nurses and officials of our own Talbot County Health Department, who have now protected one out of every 10 people in Talbot County from this dreadful contagious disease. Give us the patience and wisdom to follow their guidance on washing, masking, and social distancing until we too can receive the same protection. We pray for those who are poor or who lack optimal access to 21st century communication means, or face language barriers, including our African American and Hispanic brothers and sisters, who have been disproportionately left out of the first rounds of vaccine distribution. We pray respectfully for the families and friends of those who have lost their lives, some of them seemingly unnecessarily, because the precautions or vaccine came too late. And for those whose road to recovery is long and arduous. We give thanks for and ask blessings on our first responders, our troops, our health department officials, and all those sworn to protect us and uphold our constitution. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Now we'll do the pledge allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the real public for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Lester, for that great prayer. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, counsel, we have an agenda before us, January 26th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? None hearing, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted by unanimous consent. Good? Next would be dispersments for January 19th and the 26th. Counsel has a chance, counsel had a chance to review the 19th and the 26th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. Great? That's good? Okay, so we've got a really big surprise here. We've got a lady that is getting ready to retire, or probably has retired, that has met a lot, a lot, through the correction center. So the pretty, we're going to do a presentation of proclamation to Captain Gibbs, the Talbot County Department of Corrections, okay? So we're going to gloat on her a little bit, on her performance, and recognize her that there should be a lot more people in the world like her, okay? So counsel's next item on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation of Captain Gibbs, who will be retiring on 1st of February, after 28 years of incredible service through the Talbot County Department of Corrections. We surely would have wished to make the presentation in person. However, Madam Secretary, would you please read the proclamation into the record, please?
Proclamation in honor of Captain Michelin D. Gibbs. Whereas Michelin, Denisha Gibbs began her career as a corrections professional with the Dorchester County Department of Corrections on September 1st, 1989. And much to our mutual benefit and good fortune, she decided to leave Dorchester County for greener pastures, being hired by Talbot County on April 16th, 1992, as part of the initial cadre of correctional officers to staff a soon-to-be-opened detention center located at 115 Westover Street in Easton. And whereas during her career, she has risen through the ranks from correctional officer to corporal, to sergeant, to lieutenant, first lieutenant, and finally to captain. With each increase in rank, she willingly, skillfully, and successfully assumed additional duties and responsibilities in the ever-changing field of criminal justice. And whereas, while employed by Talbot County, Captain Gibbs served in every specialized work group, some of which include inmate librarian, transportation officer, inmate records manager, and community corrections officer, overseeing and managing work release and electronic home monitoring, and when needed to do so, managed inmate programs, all while providing unfailing support and essential services to other departments, organizations, fellow officers, and the inmate population. Retiring as operations commander, she had full responsibility for day-to-day security for both central booking and the main jail. Additionally, she served as a department's liaison with the circuit and district courts for inmate commitments and sentence demunitions, calculations, the state's attorney's office as the victim witness coordinator, and finally with the Maryland Department of Parole and Probation, responsible for submitting and maintaining files of inmate requests for parole hearings. And whereas, within the Department of Corrections, Captain Gibbs is well-known for her imitable and unique verbal communication skills, which inmates understood perfectly, and which occasionally left coworkers requesting and/or requiring an interpretation. So unique for Captain Gibbs' language skills, that it was said she was speaking Gibbonese, which meant certain words could only be defined or understood by context, as no other definition could be found to exist except for hers. And whereas, having chosen February 1st, 2021, as her official date of retirement, Captain Gibbs will have served a total of 31 years and five months in the corrections profession. 28 years, nine months, and 16 days of which have been served in Talbot County's Department of Corrections. It is an understatement to say that she will be missed. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby congratulate Captain Michelin Gibbs on her retirement, thank her for the many contributions she made over the past 28-plus years to the safety of our community and to the quality of life enjoyed by all residents of and visitors to Talbot County, and offer her best wishes for a long-term retirement. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 26th day of January in the year of 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job for reading that. So now we have in the spotlight here Terry Kokolas with some remarks on Captain Gibbs, how well she's done and giving her some kudos to us. Is Terry, are you available? Mr. Kokolas, are you available? Are you on with us? Well, maybe he's trying to get on. I think her old boss, Doug, is Doug on? Okay, they're probably trying to get on. So counsel, let's see if they can get on. And yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Pack.
Yeah, so while you wait for them to jump on, I was going to ask, I was going to make the motion that we go ahead and accept the proclamation at this time.
Second, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and second it. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, counsel, maybe Terry and Doug are trying to get online here with us. So, Mr. Pack, you want to start it off with a few comments for Captain Gibbs?
Sure.
Yeah.
Gibbs I've known for a number of years, and yes, she has been quite a stellar figure there at the detention center. First met her when Director DeVittens came onboard, and then through her work under Director Kokolas. With everything that the proclamation said about Captain Gibbs, I would concur. Never heard anyone down there at my time at the detention center say anything but very amenable and encouraging words about her and her performance of her duties. I certainly wish her well as she moves into retirement after 28 years or 40-some years in total. She has certainly earned that retirement, and I just want to wish her well, and she has served this county well through her years. So Captain Gibbs, wish you well, good luck to you, and may you enjoy the rest of your days.
Thanks a lot for those kind words, Mr. Pack. Mr. Lester?
Thank you, Mr. President. My congratulations. You know, I've been in the detention center only a few times, but frankly, every one of those visits, and I'm always a guest there, just for clarification. I've always been a guest, and every time, she has been a welcoming presence and is clearly a beloved figure among the staff there. Thank you so much for your service to Talbot County and for doing what we need to do to help after those who cannot enjoy their freedom, at least temporarily.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Mr. DeVio?
I would just like to echo the thanks for the service. 28 years and 31 years together in corrections is a very long time, and it's not something to look at lightly. So I greatly appreciate your efforts in there, as well as consistently moving up. It's excellent to see somebody go through the ranks and staying within Talbot County and staying here and just improving the detention center by doing that. So I'm very impressed. What an incredible resume, great accolades from everyone around, and I hope you enjoy retirement and hang around. We greatly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Ms. Price?
Yes, congratulations. I'm envious of anybody that can retire, but with all those years of service, you certainly deserve it. Thank you for serving Talbot County very well and with honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Is, by chance, is Mr. Kokolas, is he available? Is he online?
I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, Terry, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Great, then thank you for unmuting me. And, you know, I just want to say for the record that recognizing Captain Gibbs, who has really been the cultural awareness of the Department of Corrections for such a long period of time, she has mentored so many of the young officers, both male and female, and has really instilled upon them a desire to become career-oriented in corrections. And she has been such a stabilizing force for the department, that virtually throughout her entire career, there's not an inmate who has not entered the facility and left the facility with a positive regard for Captain Gibbs. Her persona is that strong. We will miss her, and we look forward to you, President Callahan, coming down to the facility tomorrow to recognize Captain Gibbs in person, and she's anticipating and looking really forward to seeing you.
So am I.
So I'll see you tomorrow. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Captain Gibbs. She will be a tremendous loss for our department, but everybody deserves to turn the page and turn the chapter.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, I really appreciate the kind words, and by chance, is Doug DeVittens, is he on the line? No, I guess he didn't make it. So, yes, just, you know, Captain Gibbs, I want to commend you for your service. I mean, what an accomplishment, just like counsel said, and Mr. Kokolas recognizes how special you are to the system. 28, 28 to 31 years to put in in a really tough department, not only just spending that many years, but just seeing a lot of things and trying to help a lot of people out, you know? And sometimes, you know, I'm sure a lot of people are just having tough times. I'm sure that you were, you know, a really big help to people that really just needed somebody to talk to. So it sounds like you made a lot of friends, you made a lot of, you made a lot of people, you know, happy with the way you treated them and stuff. You know, I commend, I commend somebody that can be in that environment and respect people and try to do rehabilitation to help these people. And it's, you're a special person to be doing that, and I'm sorry we're losing you, but I can't wait to come over there and present this to you. I'm looking really forward to it. So I'll be over there, I think around lunchtime, to do that for you, and it's well worth it, and I can't wait to do it for you. So other than that, does anybody else, anybody else have any closing comments? Mr. Stan?
Thank you.
Okay, well, okay, so we'll get, we'll get ready to move on, and congratulations, Captain Gibbs, and I definitely will see you tomorrow. Okay. All right, counsel, we're going to be moving on. I'm sorry.
Mr. Counsel President, this is Clay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would just also like to, you know, recognize the dedication and commitment of a long-serving public safety provider there at the correction center. She has certainly been an example for many to follow. I didn't know whether you wanted to give her just a moment to say a couple of words before you move on on your agenda. Captain Gibbs, are you still available?
Yeah. Hello?
Yes, Captain Gibbs?
Yes.
Yes. I apologize. I didn't, I didn't even know you were on here with us. I apologize.
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's good. Well, we got to hear you talk, that's for sure.
No.
That's why you've been quiet. You've been quiet. I don't want to, I definitely don't want to embarrass you. You've got a lot of people out here that think a lot of you, so I can't wait to, I don't really know you that, I've seen you, but I really don't know you, but the amount of work that you've done in helping people and the dedication of Talbot County, you need to be commended, and would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you all, and I will see you tomorrow.
Okay, I'm really looking, I'm looking forward to it. I'm a man of not many words too, so I know what that's all about, okay? So anyway, I really appreciate you being on here with us tonight and looking forward to seeing you tomorrow, okay?
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you now. I really appreciate it. Okay, counsel, are we, are we good now to move forward? Okay, so the next on the agenda is a request for approval of an agreement between Talbot County and the Department of Aging and the YMCA of the Chesapeake. Counsel, let's see, counsel's next item on the agenda is a request for approval of this agreement. I would turn it over to Tony to explain a little bit about, you know, what we've been, I think we've been fooling with this for about a year or so, trying to get this grant money straight, this $800,000, right?
That's right. This is a long process to get us to this point, but let me just back up and say that this project involves a unique partnership between the YMCA, Talbot County, and the Talbot County Board of Education. And it's been touted as a unique, a unique project throughout the state of Maryland. And what it involves is the new YMCA that's out at St. Michael's is located on school property, and it includes a Talbot County Senior Citizens Center, and the county and the YMCA have partnered for that. And part of that partnership involved the county pursuing certain grant funding from the state of Maryland. And what we're looking at right now is an $800,000 grant from the Maryland Department of Aging, and the grant has actually been awarded, but it has not been dispersed yet. And the issue that is preventing that, it's a legal disagreement, an interpretation, a question of interpretation that the Board of Education and the state of Maryland have had a disagreement on. But the parties have been communicating a great deal and working together, and we believe that we have a potential solution. And the solution involves the county entering into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Aging, and simultaneously a sub-grant agreement with the YMCA. And these agreements will allow the county, the YMCA, to ask the Maryland Board of Public Works to waive the state's notice of right of recovery that would otherwise be recorded in the land records. And so that recording that instrument is what caused this disagreement. But MDOA, Department of Aging, has indicated that they will support our request to the Board of Public Works if we agree to enter into this grant agreement. And under this grant agreement, we are saying, we understand that we're the recipient of the $800,000 grant, and we understand that the state has a right of recovery. And so in the event that within a 15-year time period, senior center activities ceased at this property, then the state could, in theory, exercise its right of recovery and attempt to claw back some of the grant funding. And that's provided already in Maryland law. The Maryland, the Maryland code already gives the state that right. This agreement is just memorializing that commitment. And since the grant agreement has certain additional requirements, such as maintaining insurance on the building, and since the YMCA is the one that owns and operates the building, we've developed the sub-grant agreement that allocates those types of responsibilities to the YMCA, which makes sense, because they're the owner of the building. And so we are asking the counsel to approve the terms of these two agreements, which let us then take the next step to the Board of Public Works. And let me add, I believe that Robbie Gill, who's the CEO of the YMCA of the Chesapeake, may be, may be with us on this conference call, and if he'd like to add a few words to this, or he's, he may be available to answer questions.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. Robbie, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, buddy. Yep.
Great. Well, thank you for having me and for this partnership. You know, prior to the pandemic, the YMCA in St. Michael's and the senior center was serving 3,000 people on a regular basis, which represents nearly three and four people that live in St. Michael's in the Bay Hundred area. And as Tony mentioned, the governor's office, as well as Secretary Klopp and Peter Francho praised this project as a unique model that should be replicated in other communities. As Tony had stated, though, we've run into just a legal issue, and the school board didn't believe they had, they had the authority to sign the document because they're not a funding entity. So I just want to say thank you to Tony for his efforts. This is over a year in the making, and it's taken us a lot longer than it should have been, but his efforts and working with Jeff Myers with the Department of Aging, I think we found a solution that'll get this grant finally in front of the Department of Aging, or Board of Public Works, so they can sign off and release the funds, which would be helpful for us, because we have a line of credit for pledges coming in. And so for every month that this passed, this costs us another $4,500. So we're, between that and legal fees, we're sniffing 100 grand just to kind of get this done. So it'll be nice to get this off our plate. We appreciate your partnership, and just excited to get back to a place where the senior center is open again, and we're serving people like we were prior to the pandemic. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Robbie. You do such a phenomenal job. By chances, is Armistead, Mr. Armistead on the call now?
No, sir. No, he's not.
He's not? Okay. Okay. Counsel? Any questions on counsel's behalf? Okay.
Mr. President, I just want to thank.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. President.
I just want to thank Mr. Gill for his patience in taking us through this process. I'm very sorry that it's taken us so long to get to this point. I know that this has been, it's been an entrepreneurial risk for the Y, and it's cost you some to bring us to this point. Thanks too to Mr. Cooper Smith for helping forge the solution that will finally, where we finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. But this is visionary leadership. Thanks, and it came about, thanks in great part to you, Mr. Gill. Thank you for making this happen.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the partnership, and, you know, it was a small little box to fit in, and this project is so unique that it just didn't fit. And so I think the hope would be, moving forward, that the state has a little more flexibility and understanding that to get anything done of any substance anymore, you've got to work together to do it. And this is a great example of that, so I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Any other council member would like to speak on this? Okay, so Tony, I want to, I want to commend you with your hard work, because like Robbie said, you've been a year full with all this, and it might, it might even be over that a little bit. But we got to the finish line with it, you know what I mean? It looks like we're going to have it, get it. And once again, Robbie, with the YMCA, your name pops up all the time, and we really do, as a county, appreciate you doing all your, all the stuff that you do for us, and we're blessed to have you, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you do for, you know, the hundreds and thousands of people that you have touched, okay? Really.
It's a blessing to call Talbot County home. I love it.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Well, we want you to stay here too. Don't go nowhere, okay? All right, so counsel, there, is there a consent to approve the agreement as presented? If so, do I have a motion?
I shall move.
I'll go second it.
I'm sorry.
DeVio, a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Madam Secretary, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I think, I think Mr. Pack has had audio issues a little bit, so maybe he can, maybe, Clay, maybe you can get the answer from him. Ms. Price?
Counsel President, we are working with Mr. Pack to get him on. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Are you okay, Laura?
I'm here.
Okay. And you voted, right?
I did.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. I didn't hear you. I didn't want to, I didn't want to not hear you, that's for sure. So, okay. Motion carries. Okay. All right, so thanks a lot, Robbie. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your service, guys. Have a wonderful night.
Okay. All right. All right, so I guess, I guess what we'll do is we'll move on, counsel. Let's move on to introduction to a number of resolutions. Counsel's next item on the agenda is introduction of a number of resolutions. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of the resolution into the record, please?
A resolution designating warehouse and office space at the Talbot County Business Center surplus property pending demolition of the former Black and Decker Building, approving the leasing of such space for appraised to fair market value, and subject to certain conditions, delegating authority to the Eastern Airport Manager to negotiate, execute, modify, and extend leases from time to time as the airport manager deems appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Cooper Smith, would you mind kind of talking through of this resolution and help us understand because we're really just trying to simplify this?
Sure. That'd be great. This resolution recognizes that at the Talbot County Business Center, the former Black and Decker Building, we have a number, and have had a number of tenants out there since we acquired the building several years ago. And we all know that the building is going to be slated for demolition several years down the road in order to comply with the FAA requirements that have to do with the landing and takeoff area and the avoidance of obstructions. But the county has done a good job, in my view, of making sure that that property continues to be productive and brings in revenue while we're waiting for the demolition. And we've been fortunate to have a number of excellent tenants out there over the last couple of years and still. And what's been, the way we've been administering this is each time we have a tenant who approaches the county and is interested, we've been bringing each of those individual agreements through the county council, through the resolution process, on a case-by-case basis. And while that certainly is effective in that it's, we're able to get those done, it does take quite a bit of time for each one to be done on an individual basis. And so what this resolution recognizes is that for the remaining available space out there at the business center, this would give the airport manager the authority to enter into leases with other tenants who might approach us tomorrow, the next day, for the next couple of years, and give him the authority to enter into those leases, subject though to certain conditions, including that the property, that the space be rented for fair market value and that the tenants be responsible for their proportionate share of utilities, taxes, and so forth. So that's what this resolution accomplishes. The airport manager recently had the property appraised. And so we have the appraisal values of $3 a square foot for warehouse space and $6 a square foot for office space. And so that's been evaluated independently by professionals. And so when you're delegating this authority to the airport manager, you are doing it with these conditions. And so he would be constrained to make sure it's rented for that amount. So that's what this resolution seeks to accomplish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper Smith. That tells us what we need to know. Counsel, because we are meeting in a virtual environment this evening, I'm going to ask Madam Secretary to please conduct a roll call to introduce the resolution. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please announce the number to the public and the date and time, please?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 298. And the public hearing, it's 298. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that is Resolution 298, Tuesday, February, what?
23rd.
23rd, okay, at 6:30. Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay. Let's move on to, counsel's next item on the agenda is introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of the bill into the record, please?
A bill to amend Chapter 11 of the Talbot County Code of Alcoholic Beverages to clarify that the definition of theater nonprofit in Section 11-1.1 of the code includes an outdoor theater with the intended result that the outdoor theater could sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises during events under the theater's Class BT on sale liquor license.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Cooper Smith and I have been working a little bit on this. He's done a really, really great job trying to craft what we can do to help this business. I mean, obviously, the business is shut down. We want to be able to do everything we can to help the Avalon be prosperous and successful. So, Mr. Cooper Smith, can you kind of elaborate on how we've tried to help them on this bill? Or this legislation, I'm sorry, on this legislation?
Sure. So this legislation arises out of some of the problems that businesses have been experiencing due to COVID. In this particular case, we're talking about nonprofit theaters, the Avalon Theater, and then there's the theater in Oxford, both of which could be affected by this. But it's the Avalon that approached the county. And as folks may know, the Avalon has opened up a second outdoor, semi-outdoor venue over at the Talbot Town Shopping Center. And right now, they do not have a liquor license, a permanent liquor license for that facility at Talbot Town. They have their liquor license for their Dover Street Avalon Theater location. But they have been able to come to the county on an ad hoc basis to get special permits for special events when they're having a performance at the outdoor theater. But this piece of legislation would create a pathway for them to have a permanent status at that outdoor venue for their alcohol sales. So they don't have to come to us each time they're going to have an event.
Right, right.
And so as currently drafted, the definition of nonprofit theater does not necessarily allow for or contemplate an outdoor-type facility. So we have changes here to the definition to allow for the outdoor theater. And then later on in the ordinance, we have provisions that place certain, have certain requirements for the outdoor location. And the goal here is not to try to micromanage what their operation is. It's just simply to have a couple of safeguards here to ensure that that outdoor location has been vetted. And so some of the requirements include approval from, in this case, the town of Easton, saying that you're allowed to actually have that facility there. And I believe they already have that approval. And then it's approval from the owner of the property, the owner of Talbot Town. And all that's pretty standard fare. And then there would also be a hearing and opportunity for comment before Avalon would have this, the ability to sell alcohol at that location permanently.
Okay, Mr. Cooper Smith, I appreciate it. That's a great explanation. I think we're all on board to try to help these businesses because of COVID and, you know, some of the economical problems they've had through the years and stuff, and just trying to create help for them. And Tony, I really appreciate you working really hard on that because you were a big part of that. We worked with Al to try to help him, and he's been very patient. So hopefully, this would help their business and they can move forward. So, once again, counsel, because we're meeting virtually, Madam Secretary, can you conduct a roll call for this legislation, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay, counsel, so what I'd like to do, Madam Secretary, could you, once again, if you don't mind, give us a bill number on the date and the time, please?
This will be known as Bill Number 1469. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Okay, so everybody, it's Bill Number 1469. And it's going to be Tuesday, February 23rd at 6:30. Good job, Madam Secretary, and good job, Tony. I really appreciate you working hard on that, okay? All right, let's move on.
Counsel President?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Pack is on now, if you want to test that connection.
Oh, okay. Mr. Pack, are you back with us?
I'm here. I didn't say, that's why I didn't vote on it, okay?
Okay, okay. No problem. But you can hear and you're on board, right?
Well, I'm with you for the time being.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. So, okay, all right, next, let's see here now. Next on the agenda, okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary, Tony Cooper Smith, brought us information about possible legislation. Okay, so next on the agenda is, let's see here now, yeah.
We have another bill scheduled for legislation?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, I'm sorry, would you go ahead and read the legislation, please?
A bill to approve execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement by and between Talbot County, Maryland, Wycomico County, Maryland, Somerset County, Maryland, Worcester County, Maryland, Dorchester County, Maryland, Caroline County, Maryland, Queen Anne's County, Maryland, Kent County, Maryland, and Cecil County, Maryland, and each of the sheriffs for the foregoing jurisdictions pursuant to Section 2-105 of the Criminal Procedure Article, Maryland Annotated Code.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate that. Sorry I couldn't get straight there. So, Mr. Cooper Smith, would you go ahead and explain a little bit about this legislation, please?
Sure. The title of this bill captures it pretty well. It's a mutual aid agreement among the sheriffs and the various Eastern Shore counties. And in effect, it's saying, look, if Caroline County is having some kind of an emergency, law enforcement-related emergency or event, and they need extra support, they can call Sheriff Gamble, and Sheriff Gamble, if he has availability, he can send extra assets over to help. And I understand that Sheriff Gamble is on the line, or is on this call. And so I think we'd be happy to hear from Sheriff Gamble if he's available on this.
Yeah, I believe Sheriff Gamble is on board here, isn't he?
Yep, I am.
Yep, sounds good, Sheriff. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the law currently allows the sheriffs to share resources, but it's not real clear in the law that it can be outside of an emergency. So right now, if there's an emergency in Talbot County, I could call other sheriffs to send deputies to assist us. But the law is not real clear on whether it's not an emergency. Say there's a planned event here in Talbot County, and we needed extra resources, or in Wycomico County, this would allow us with this mutual aid agreement, and we need your permission to approve, you know, a local ordinance to support it, that we could plan for that in the future. So we could say, okay, so-and-so. For instance, Ocean City's had some issues with an event they have down there every year, like an unofficial event that the city doesn't sponsor. And it came into question of whether or not you could send a Talbot County deputy down there to assist for a planned event outside of an emergency. It's kind of like the law's kind of like a little gray in that for an emergency, I can send people. But, and I can ask for people to come here. But can we ask for that support when there's not an emergency? So it kind of clarifies that. And all the sheriffs on the shore, we met, we all were in agreement, and went through our legal people. And Tony's done a great job with the MOU, as well as the other legal advisors on the shore. So that's what we're asking for.
Okay, Sheriff, thank you. Okay, Mr. Cooper Smith, do you want to say anything else? Are you good? Okay, okay, so since we're meeting virtually, Madam Secretary, could you please conduct a roll call of this legislation, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Secretary, could you please announce the bill number and date and time, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1470. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Those that might have missed it, it is Bill, or Legislation 1470, February 23rd at 6:30. So appreciate you hanging in there with the sheriff. You're doing a good job. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is discussion of pending General Assembly legislation. I think everybody has, I think we've got one. Johnny Mouts has asked us to do a support letter on the bill that he gave everybody on deer hunting and turkey hunting on Sundays.
And I do believe he has called in. I don't know if Parker, if you have him on there?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay? I'm here.
Yes, 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 Johnny, go ahead.
Good to see you, everybody.
Good seeing you. Appreciate you being with us tonight.
The legislation that, the Sunday hunting legislation would make Sundays that are currently available in Dorchester also available in Talbot. If you read the legislation, it says the first Sunday, or second Sunday in October through the first Sunday in January, I believe. I'm trying to, I'm doing this off of memory. I don't have the bills in front of me. But simply what it would do is there's like two weekends where you can hunt in Dorchester on Sundays and not in Talbot. And I believe Caroline County is pursuing the same, the same hunting, same hunting days. The only distinction between Talbot and the other counties is that our only public hunting area is Seth Woods. Seth Woods is a non-equestrian parcel, and it's also a non-firearm parcel. So you can't hunt deer with a firearm there. You can only bow hunt. So we included Seth Woods in the Sunday hunting proposal.
Okay, that's great. That's great. So Johnny, you're asking for support for this, for this, for this bill, correct?
Correct, correct.
So counsel, so we need to sort of, are we going to support this? Are we going to oppose it, or we're going to take no position? So I guess what I'll do is, Mrs. Price?
Delegate Mouts, this is one, I feel like I've seen it before. Have you tried this one before? Have we had trouble, or did it just run out of time last year?
Yeah, this bill was supported last year by the council, and it expired because the legislature adjourned it for COVID.
Okay, that's what I thought. So we had sent in a letter of support last year. So I'd make a motion to resurrect that letter supporting HB 325 and SB 475 for Delegate Mouts.
Question for Mr. Mouts. And again, I know that we've been over this ground before. I'm curious, I understand the surrounding counties also have, also have this particular allowance. We've got this tradition of not doing it in Talbot County on Sundays. Is there something other than keeping up with the Joneses in Carolina and Dorchester County that's driving this particular initiative?
Well, actually, we do have hunting in Talbot County on Sundays. And this is just, you know, there's not, we don't have the same Sundays as the other counties. So when you have bordering counties, you can have a farm on one side of the road, on the road where you can hunt, and another farm on another side of the road where you can't hunt. Or there are some individuals who are hunting in multiple counties. And basically, it just, it unifies our hunting laws rather than have them broken out county by county. The way this would change, the way the law's written, it says, in the following counties, you can hunt on these days. And it says, it goes through a list of counties. And basically, this would do is just add Talbot to that list of counties.
And this is strictly for deer and turkey and with, and as you said, with- And this is strictly for deer and turkey and with, and as you said, with shotguns, not rifles?
Well, in the season allowed. So, there is one Sunday that would allow for gun hunting in the late gun season, firearm hunting. The restriction on firearms in Seth Woods, there's no firearms in Seth Woods even during firearm season. So, that's, you can hunt in Seth Woods with a bow during deer season without a firearm.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think there is four or five Sundays of bow hunting. In one Sunday, the first Sunday of shotgun, we can hunt the first Sunday, but not the second Sunday. So, I think I'm telling you right, there's five or six Sundays that we already can hunt, if I'm correct, Johnny?
I believe so.
Yeah. So, this is, yes, sir.
Thank you for the clarification. So, I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Go ahead, Mr. Pack.
Yeah, I think you're correct. And I know I have been out hunting on a Sunday before, previously. I don't know which Sunday it was.
Yeah.
I know I've been on a Sunday. But to get to Delegate Mouts's point, I don't think that there's any area where Talbot County and Dorchester County touch, nor is there any area where Talbot County and Caroline County touch. So, as far as neighboring farms, I don't think that would qualify. But I certainly agree that if we wanted to, and this is not, as Mr. Lesch was pointing out, this is not doing what the Joneses do. But, you know, we already can hunt on certain Sundays. So, it's not anything unusual. All this bill allow you to now have four ranges of hunting on those Sundays that are now excluded. So, but I don't think it would be a case where you would run into a fact where a hunter would be on one side of a farm that stratos across the county line. I don't think there's any area where those counties touch that that would fall into place, so.
Yeah, Councilman Pack, you're correct. But if Caroline County enacts this, that will be the case.
Okay.
I second Mr. Price's motion, Mr. Callahan.
Okay, okay. We've got a motion and a second on the floor to send a support letter. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, counsel, I appreciate it. Johnny, I appreciate your hard work, buddy. And, you know, you got your letter up there. So, let's see if we can possibly get it done this year, you know?
And I'm sorry, Senator Eckert couldn't be here. For some reason, I didn't have this on my schedule. At the last minute, I picked up on the meeting. And she's cross-filing the bills. We both thank everybody on the council for everything you're doing, their support. If there's anything that comes up on these bills in the short term, even after a letter of support's been written, don't hesitate to call us right away. It's a crazy year right now, so far, so.
Okay, all right.
Good luck, everyone.
Okay, you too, Dal. Thanks a lot. Appreciate your hard work.
Bye-bye.
Okay, counsel, so next on the agenda, counsel, next on the agenda, we got an item discussing the request by Moore's Road LLC to officially, on the official zoning map. I think is, Miguel, are you on here, Miguel?
I am on the line. Thank you.
Okay, that's perfect. That's the way you can get me out of there, you know what I mean? Bring us up to date on the zoning, because, you know, it's over there in Royal Oak. It's sort of complicated, but it's not complicated. And you've done a great job trying to bring us, and bring this, and working with the client on this, too. So, I really appreciate you working with the client on trying to make this happen.
Absolutely. I have a couple slides, President Callahan, if I can get that.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
All right. So, the applicant is Moore's Road LLC, as it stated on the agenda. They filed for an amendment in October of last year to amend the official zoning maps of Talbot County, to rezonate a portion of their property from Village Hamlet to Western Rural Conservation. And I'll explain that in a minute. But the location of the property, just to orient you, is at the intersection of Royal Oak Road and Bellevue Road. And right now, the current subdivision consists of nine lots, as well as approximately 14 acres of remaining lands. And so, you can see on that graphic, I've labeled the nine lots. The remaining lands, you'll see that it's split zoned. There's a little dash line that indicates where that zoning boundary is on the remaining lands. To the north of that dash line, I think it's north anyways, is Village Hamlet. And then to, below that dash line is the remaining land zone, Western Rural Conservation. And then that dash red line is the critical area boundary. So, within that critical area, it's zoned RC, Resource Conservation. And anytime there's a critical area boundary, there's a critical area overlay as well. So, the most important point on this graphic to understand is that the remaining lands is split zone VH, WRC, and RC. What the applicant is asking for is a rezoning of 2.029 acres approximately of their property from Village Hamlet to Western Rural Conservation. The remaining lands portion has a significant amount of environmental features on it, including forest cover and non-titled wetlands, which makes that property, that remaining lands property, which has development rights on it, it makes it difficult to utilize those development rights. So, this request, if you see that green area, which is the area they're proposing to rezone from VH to WRC, it includes other properties. It's not just property in the, on the remaining lands, but it includes property in Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 2, and Lot 3. This request coincides with a major subdivision plat that they currently have in process. It recently received preliminary plat approval by the Planning Commission. And that subdivision plat would essentially add acreage to the remaining lands to create a Lot 10 that includes that rezoned area that you see in that graphic. And by doing that, the applicant then can use Lot 10 and utilize an upland billable area to build a single-family home on the remaining lands. And this is an aerial view of the property. So, you can see the significant forest cover and other environmental features on the remaining lands. The Planning Commission reviewed the application at their January 6 meeting, and they recommended to the council support for the zone map amendment based on several findings. Our code for the zone map amendment process states that after receiving, after the council receives recommendations of the Planning Commission and the Planning Director, any member of the council can then introduce legislation. And then if any member of the county council introduces legislation, there are specific notification requirements. And a majority of the council members at that point will be required to visit the site, inspect the physical features of the property, and then determine the character of the surrounding area. A majority of the council members have to do that before they make a decision on the legislation. So, should the council direct staff to draft legislation eligible for introduction? Staff will then prepare a report prior to the council public hearing that will include an analysis of our findings and consistency with the change or mistake rule. That change or mistake rule is our two factors to be considered when making a decision on a zone map amendment that's not a comprehensive rezoning in the county. And that report with those findings and analysis of the change or mistake rule will then assist you, the council, with then making that decision.
Okay, sounds great, Miguel. I really appreciate that explanation. So, I'm going to open it up for discussion with counsel. So, Mrs. Price?
Trying to find my unmute button. Nothing to discuss at this point. Just want to continue to look at the information and see what the Planning Commission, you know, all end of that. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Mr. DiVillo?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Pack?
No questions. I'll wait on the next question. Thanks.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Lesher?
You know, I read the advanced materials on this, and I just want to express my appreciation to Mr. Salinas's explanation, because I got much more out of it than I did out of reading the advanced material. Thank you very much. This obviously is one of those very complex land planning issues, and I appreciate your sorting it out for us. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lesher. I would agree. Miguel, you've done a great job on this. And really, so, the short and sweet of it is, basically, all he wants is one more place to build a house, correct?
That is correct.
That's it. It's really that simple. So, you've done a great job trying to craft a solution to a tough problem over there, you know what I mean? Because all he's trying to do is provide housing for people. So, I really appreciate that, okay? So, the consensus is, Miguel, I guess it's okay to say with counsel to go ahead and move forward to sort of craft up some legislation?
That is correct. We will work with the county attorney's office to draft legislation. Come to you at a future council meeting, and it'll be eligible for introduction.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do I need to put a formal vote on that?
I don't believe so. Just if you directed them, if all the council members agree to that.
Okay, okay. I'm just checking. That's all. Okay, Miguel, well, thanks a lot for everything, and we'll wait to hear from you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Yes, sir, Mr. Pack.
He'll also be submitting that report for the change or mistake as well, correct?
That's correct. That'll be part of the analysis in the report.
Mr. President, I forgot to bring up two bill numbers, not for action tonight, but for awareness. Would you mind if I went back one agenda item, just to mention two pieces of legislation I'd like you all to look at that we might need to talk about next time?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, there is one that is HB 472, which basically would ban glyphosate, which is better known as Roundup Weed Killer. And I understand from the Baltimore County Executive that they're going to amend it so that it would only apply to state government properties. But if it's the camel's nose under the tent, our agricultural community, I think they're already up in arms about it, and how that might affect them. If this amendment doesn't go through, that would limit it to state government. So, again, it's HB 472, which, if it's not amended properly, could really have a negative effect. And I see Preston there might even affect, you know, some parks and rep applications as well. Because it's, like I said, better known as Roundup Weed Killer. The other one that I'd like you guys to look at is HB 655. And that one basically says that counties with districts, you can only, the voters in that district can vote on the commissioner. Now, it doesn't include county councils yet. And you might think, well, that's very obvious that if you're in a district. But there are some counties, and I believe this one might be targeted right now to St. Mary's. But St. Mary's is asking for a support letter. The Mago is going to oppose this, as far as I know, tomorrow. But St. Mary's is asking for letters of support from other jurisdictions. And while, as written, it does not look like it applies to Talbot County, because we are a county council as opposed to county commissioners, and we are all at large. But it is, again, maybe one step into the state forcing counties to create districts, which we do not currently have. So, if you could look at those two bill numbers, the ag community may be asking us for support or to oppose the one having to do with the Roundup Weed Killer. And some of the, St. Mary's is currently asking us to write a letter of opposition, which Mago will be doing, I'm sure the Rural County Coalition will be doing. But they have asked for individual letters of support, I mean, to not allow, to oppose it. So, both of these would be oppose. Since they only came to me today, I'm not going to ask for action, but I would ask you all to read up on those bills. And that way, I've announced this publicly, if for some reason we need to take some action prior to the next meeting to send any letters, just kind of putting it out there now. Do you have any questions at this point about them?
I think this price probably, in fairness, since nobody knows about these bills, I think we need to probably just let us do our research. And if council wants to put it on the agenda, next meeting, we can do that. But I'd rather not discuss that right now.
Yep. Thank you for allowing me to at least say what the two bills are. I appreciate it.
Hey, no problem. No problem at all. Appreciate the info. Okay, County Manager Report, Mr. Clay Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President, member of the council. Appreciate it. I have several items for your consideration this evening.
Yeah, no problem.
Board and committee appointments. First is the Board of Appeals, requesting the reappointment of Paul Shortle Jr. and Frank Cavanaugh to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Remove, Cory.
Second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to put these two people on the Board of Appeals. Madam Secretary, can you, do we want to do this, vote each one, correct? Okay. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President, members of the council. Next one is the Short Term Rental Review Board, requesting the appointment of Dave McQuay and Martha Suss to the Short Term Rental Review Board.
Remove, Cory.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you. I also want to announce, relative to the Short Term Rental Review Board, that there is currently a vacancy on this board for an attorney with real estate experience. If interested in serving in this capacity, please contact the County Manager's Office at 401-077-08010.
Mr. Stan, before you move on, I think this is something that we should consider. When we put this board together, and we created these five positions to serve in various roles, some from the short-term rental neighborhood, some from the real estate community, and one of them was what you just described, an attorney. And I think when we did this like three years ago, we felt, the council at times felt that that was really important. I think it's going to be more challenging to find somebody with real estate experience who is also an attorney to fill that role. So, I don't know, the council wants to discuss whether or not we might consider changing the makeup of the board to open that up a little bit more. Or I think it's going to be tough to find an attorney for this position with real estate experience that's going to want to serve.
Okay, I guess that would require amending legislation. Of course, the council can certainly do that, and we can look into that, working with Tony.
You can always have draft legislation and do that. We probably don't want to talk about that before the legislation is drafted.
Right, right. So, what we need, what we need to do is probably, Ms. Price, if you want to get with Tony and work on a little bit of that, and come up with that, you know, we've got to change it. So, maybe... You know, we've, we've got to change it. So maybe, maybe that's the way to go. What do, what do you think, Tony? I mean, something we got to sort of consider, you know? I think it's a good consideration. I mean, it is going to be tough. Mrs. Price is right. So I think maybe, could you, could you maybe work on something to come up with a, a different proposal on the qualifications?
Yeah, sure. I'm certainly available. It's a valid point. I'm happy to work with council members.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Price, for bringing that up.
Thank you. The next item I have is regarding the Tourism Board, requesting the appointment of Ron Engle as the Town of Easton's representative on the Tourism Board.
I move the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
And finally, under Board and Committee Appointments, we have the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board. This is a multi-county board, Dorchester, Caroline, Queen Anne, Kent, and Talbot Counties, were asking for council's concurrence for the appointment of Torenda Thomas to serve on that Upper Shore Works for Investment Board to represent the Maryland Department of Labor.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dovio?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next item I have is requesting council's approval to send a letter of support to the Maryland Rural Legacy Program in support of the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy sponsorship of the Rural Legacy Program in Talbot County Rural Legacy Area Priorities for the Tuckahoe Rural Legacy Area and the Eastern Shore Heartland Rural Legacy Area. These rural legacy areas are consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. We do have Miguel available, who can answer any questions relative to this subject, and the pack of material has been placed in your granicus. Miguel, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
Uh, I don't. And just, just to mention what you did, which is, there is, if you have somebody, if you have any questions, I think David Satterfield from Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, I think, is on the call. Okay.
Mr. Durham, is there anybody on the call?
Uh, yes.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Is somebody on the call?
Uh, yes, Mr. Satterfield is available to, to speak if he wants to.
Okay, yeah. Would you like to speak? What's it?
Uh, yes, council members, I just wanted to thank Talbot County for the continued support of conservation throughout the shore, especially here in Talbot County. Um, this letter will go a long way to helping us secure funds for both Eastern Shore Heartland and Tuckahoe Rural Legacy Areas for the application cycle. So we thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Satterfield. I really appreciate that, council.
Second.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Can I ask a question before we go?
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely.
So, did this come up last year, or did we add some areas into this last year?
I can answer something, that's a really good question, actually, and good memory. It did. Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, and David, you can always correct me if I'm wrong in this, they yearly go for an application to DNR and the Rural Legacy Program for support for their sponsorship of their focus areas. And I believe last year, what we explained to the council, that was that there was some revisions to the two focus areas, the Eastern Shore Heartland Focus Area and the, and the, the, uh, is it the Frederick Douglass one? I'm forgetting now the name of the other one. But there, there were some changes to that. I think it expanded, in particular, the, the, the focus area to the north. And the Tuckahoe, thank you, the Tuckahoe Focus, Focus Area. So there were some changes last year to that, those two areas.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Davilio, for bringing that up. Good memory, bud, good memory. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. And Madam Secretary, could we call the roll, please?
Mr. Council?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Council, members of council. The next item I have is requesting council approval with submit applications to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Program to reapply for funding for sewer extensions for projects that our county engineer, Ray Clark, will go over in general. They deal with Resolution 235, Resolution 250, and 295. Ray, can you go into a little more detail on this, please?
Sure thing. We, we are in the process, I guess, we finalized the application, we're requesting, I guess, council's approval to submit. We received a letter or an email from MDE indicating that we would have to resubmit for Resolution 235, as well as Resolution 250. In the event we ran into problems with MDE on Resolution 235 funding, we're, and we're not able to get that by June. What we're hoping to do is have this application in, so we, we wouldn't have a, too much of a delay. If we miss this, we might be out three years for Resolution 235. For Resolution 250, we are, this would basically put funding in for the county for that project at about July 1 of 2022, which is kind of correlating with our design schedule and then our schedule to get the work out to the property owners and start connecting properties, which will probably be about the first part of 2023. The other item we have is basically the biosol facility. We submitted last year, we're requesting to resubmit that project. MDE basically gave us a low ranking for that application due to the fact that we did not have a smart growth exception. So we put that in Resolution 295, which the council adopted, and that's, we're now submitting, you know, like to resubmit that for refinancing for the biosol facility.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Anybody, any, any questions on council? Any questions?
No move.
We got, we got a motion and a second, council. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
The next item we have is requesting council approval to secure available grant funding through the Bay Restoration Funding for the extension of sewer to the Talbot County Community Center, and to receive with bidding the project for construction. I'm going to turn it over to Ray to finish out detail and be available for question on this project that we're looking forward to getting done sooner rather than later.
Be great. True, very true. Yeah, we're, we're in the process right now, council, affording the designs to MDE for the MDE construction permit, to extend sewer to the Talbot County Community Center. To help fund that, we're looking at trying to secure Bay Restoration Funds that we typically allocate each year. This is possible, it could be that we'll receive funds both the, this fiscal year and next fiscal year through the Bay Restoration Fund. Our hope is to really get this finished up before the summer ends, so that's our goal.
Summer, this summer of 2021?
2021, yes, sir.
I'm writing that down, Ray.
Aye. Please do.
All right, I'll make a motion to apply for the Bay Restoration Funds for extension of sewer to the community center, finally.
Yes. We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please? Ho, hold tight. I'm, I'm sorry.
We've been waiting on this for so, for so long, on this project, and I know that Mr. Pepper and his staff have been agonizing over this, pumping and hauling. Gosh, I must say, over two years now at the community center. Of course, we had, we were on the same roll in delay, if you would, with the, with the hospital on 662, whether or not they're going to move that roadway or not. It, it's just time for us to do this. It, it's been too long in the making, so I'm certainly going to support this, this resolution. And hopefully, we get the grant funding to make this connection possible this year.
Well, I think we've been pumping and hauling ever.
Yeah, I'm saying two years, two years lightly, Ms. Price, but it's probably running longer than that. You're probably right.
Yeah. It's probably since about 2014.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion, motion on the floor. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ray, thank you. Ray, you can take a break for just a minute, but don't go away. Council, the next item I have is requesting council approval to submit a letter to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources stating Eastern Airport intends to participate in the state's deer cooperator program and will submit the required application. I do have the airport manager, Micah, on the line. If you would like to add anything else, Micah, I'll be available for questions.
Yeah, thanks, Clay. So in all of 2019, we entered the DNR's deer cooperator program. This was a change. For years, they did, they issued a permit that allowed the airport to take deer year round. In 2019, they changed their process. They put us in the deer cooperator program. They, we, because of COVID, there were delays in communicating towards the end of 2020. But what they're telling us now is this will be an annual reappearance into the program. So in practice, nothing has changed. We've been doing the same thing for, you know, decades. We just have to, you know, document it and put it into this cooperator program. So what we're asking for tonight is council support, a letter of support to conclude into our program act.
Make a motion for sending a letter of support.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The next item I have is requesting council approval for an intergovernmental agreement for services between Talbot County and the Maryland Environmental Service to manage recycling sites throughout Talbot County. Ray Clark is here and can add any additional information and be available for questions. Ray?
Yeah, council, this is basically to pick up trash as well as recyclables that are outside the bins. This is also, this helps to keep the sites, I guess, well managed or maintained at Perry Cabin Park, Growls Market, Yonkers Market, along with the Auto Zone. And I think we also have recycled bins at Bat Creek. We are continuing, I guess, have recycling at the tennis courts in Oxford, probably through this month, through February. So this will also help to keep that site as well cleaned up.
So, Ray, is this just a renewal of that agreement?
We actually, we had requested, I guess, requested funding from MES to do this, and they gave us something, but now they, they've asked that we go ahead and do an amendment within the agreement. That, you know, basically outlines that this is a part of the budget process. They'll submit the budget to us, and then, you know, we work with the council.
Okay, council, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, council. We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Is Brent Gardner on the line? Just checking.
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, Brent, thank you. So the next item I have is request from the Office of Permits and Inspections to approve recommendation for the Middle Department Inspection Agency for increases in the electrical fee schedule. And we do have Brent Gardner available to add more detail and be available for questions from council. Brent?
Yes, MDIA has requested a increase in some of the fees that they charge the electricians directly for their inspections. That was a part of the contract we entered into with MDIA back in 2017. As far as my knowledge, this is the first increase that they've asked for since I've been on board. I presented this to the Electrical Board, which they unanimously approved the recommendation to, from the council to accept these fees.
So are, are the numbers that are in yellow the proposed new fees, or is that where they currently are? Because I see off to the left, it says plus five or plus 10, so.
Those are the proposed or proposed fees, and I just put over to the left what that increase was from the previous contract.
So like the first one, it was 30 and the proposing 34?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, council. There's a motion on the floor.
If, if the Electrical Board is already reviewed this, and they're asking, and they are recommending that council goes along, go along and approve this, I'll make a motion for the speed increase for MDIA.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, please call the roll, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The next item I have is requesting council approval to award bid number 20-15 to the low bidder Clearwater Pool in Space in a sum of $86,490. A total of two bids were received. Both the George Murphy Pool in Easton and the Bay Hundred Pool in St. Michael's will be replastered. I do have Preston Pepler on the line, who can add detail or answer any questions.
So we, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
So this was done, we were, this was discovered during routine maintenance of the pool. We still had to drain it, check the plumbing, and do everything, even though we didn't actually have the pools open this past summer. It was discovered that the, the plaster is worn pretty bad. This is, this is something that happens over time. Whether it be weather related, time related, some of it's due to, if the pool's not balanced right, it'll do this. So, you know, please keep in mind, this also has never been done in the span that both these pools have been in place, so it's been almost 20 years since this is done. So unfortunately, this is just one of those maintenance things that goes along with having a plaster pool. So were the, the bids similar in regard to, it's, what, 30 about? Were they similar in regards to the pools? Like, was, was the one that was higher, higher on both pools? So it was just, it was just asked for one number? Okay. But I will say that we had another quote from a different company that was even higher than that, the second one there, that they didn't bid, though. But just a quote that we had gotten, just to double check our stuff prior to the bid. Perfect, thank you.
Hey, hey, Preston, one, one, one thing that makes me a little bit nervous is that it's covered up and there's water in it now, right?
They might still be uncovered, because they, they were uncovered in October, November, when we did the routine maintenance. So they're not covered now, but it doesn't, since they're going to have to be drained and repaired anyway, the, the covering them right now is kind of irrelevant.
So, so in other words, the October, November is when they actually did the bids, and they're not going to do the bid, or they're not going to do the work until what, March or April?
Yeah, they went through the bid, and that was in the bid packet. We, yeah, it was stated in there that this would not be done until closer to pool opening.
Okay. So, all right, so it, it does, it does make me a little bit nervous that once they get in there and start cleaning it, that they're going to come back with, with, you know, more problems or something like that. So I would, I would just ask if that's the case. And it, and it, and it made me a little bit leery that one of the contractors seen something that the other one didn't, and that's why it's $30,000 difference.
Right.
That, that, that's all, you know?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, council. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Callahan.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to second it. Okay, we got a motion to second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Counsel President, members of the council, that concludes the county manager report on behalf of the staff. I thank you for your continued support and leadership.
Once again, Mr. Stan, what an excellent job you have done. You know what I mean? Proud of you. Proud of you. All right, that's okay. Okay, counsel, now we've got public comment. Mr. Dorm, do we have anybody that wants to talk to us?
We do have two people online. Additional are coming online, ready to make comments. Do we have a timer for this evening?
I'm going to let Mrs. Price do that. She does a good job on that. And if you want to have the caller tell us who they are and where they're from, that'd be great.
Okay, our first caller that I will unmute is calling in from a 410-745 number.
Okay.
Caller, please begin.
Good evening. My name is David Montgomery from Easton. I'd like to speak to controversies over the Talbot Boys Monument. Recent letters to the county council claim an incredible ground swell and uproar and cite nearly 200 signs placed since January 1st as reasons that the council should immediately remove the Talbot Boys statue. Since January 16th, a roughly equal number of signs have appeared throughout the county asking to preserve Talbot history. No matter how loud the clamor from those who hate the sight of a 100-year-old statue, there's no evidence of consensus or even that a majority of voters want it removed. Recognizing this, it's time for those who want to move the Confederate monument to stop labeling their neighbors who disagree as racists and white supremacists. Some have even linked those who do not want the Talbot Boys removed with the bearer of a Confederate battle flag into the U.S. Capitol on January 6th. It's an offensive slur and a ridiculous argument. I thought the worst was an email from a voter to the council that said, "If you continue protecting this statue and its flag, you're protecting what it stands for: racism, hatred, white supremacy." Then today, I read an email from council member Pack telling a voter that even her support for a unity statue is just another attempt to promote white supremacy, just another form of hidden racism. That kind of language from an elected official is doubly offensive, unacceptable, and it should be censored. These unjustified attacks on the monument and its supporters are based on refusal to accept the facts of the history of the monument and of the Civil War in Maryland. More hate is being directed at our Confederate soldiers today than they faced after the war from their neighbors who supported the North. Talbot men wore blue and gray at the Battle, both blue and gray at the Battle of Culp Hill, and they mourned for each other after the battle. In the 1880s, the spirit of national reconciliation that inspired great reunions of Union and Confederate veterans at Gettysburg and Antietam was extended to national monuments that saluted the courage of both North and South. Maryland was the first to commemorate the services of both its Union and Confederate commands in its monument in Antietam, dedicated in 1900. As an aside, I'd like to ask Mr. Pack if he also wants to remove these unity monuments. I believe that the only acceptable route forward is that laid out by Laura Price in her draft administrative resolution. We should keep the current statue as it is and add a statue of the Union soldier with names of all the soldiers from Talbot County who fought on either side. This approach is consistent with the longstanding practice of remembrance and reconciliation. There's no need to project current grievances back onto men who died over 100 years ago. A joint monument should ease the minds of those who believe that Talbot County's reputation is besmirched by a statue displaying insignia of the Southern Army, and it should be acceptable to those who are unwilling to let their 100-year-old piece of history vanish. Let's work on this together to get out of the mire of name-calling. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it, Mr. Montgomery. Thanks a lot for your call and your words. Thank you. Second caller?
Our next caller is calling in from a 773-793 number.
Okay.
Caller, please begin.
Yes, how you doing? I'm Paul Callahan. I live in Trap. I have a Chicago number. I'm also a veteran of the United States Armed Forces. Hey, I support keeping the Talbot Boys Monument at the courthouse. I also support a unity monument that commemorates all men from Talbot County that served in the Civil War. Because of the social justice movement, which is a noble and honorable cause, we again are facing the question of the Talbot Boys. However, the current argument against the Talbot Boys is significantly different than the past arguments. Today's accusations are no longer centered on the context of telling the whole story or on the display of objectional symbols. The narrative now is against the men themselves. There is an ongoing attack against their history. One side is making accusations that the only reason the monument was placed is to oppress. They also accuse that the only reason these men rose was for an evil purpose. This side promotes a history of hate and excludes and denies all their motivations and historical facts. They state its placement in the era of Jim Crow as proof of its sinister intent. However, Jim Crow spanned 100 years, and it is grossly unjust to claim that anything that occurred during those 100 years must have an evil motive. Mr. Pack personally ensured the history of this monument was recorded before he voted in 2016 to keep it. The record states that the commissioners in 1914 agreed to accept both Confederate and Union memorials at the courthouse to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the end of the Civil War. We also know this monument was solely intended to commemorate the Talbot men in gray and not the Confederacy. I would advise Mr. Pack and our council members that though our minds and hearts may wander, truth must always be your immovable beacon. If you need inspiration, you need not to look far. Where our courthouse lawn is a monument to a great American hero who told us that truth is proper and beautiful at all times and all places, and I'm talking about Frederick Douglass. The accusations that the men of Talbot only fought for evil purposes certainly could have merit if we were in a deep southern state that seceded. But Maryland is not, and we did not succeed. Maryland men fought for Maryland reasons, and those reasons are just and many. The side that desires a hate-based history rejects all other motivations and historical facts and dismisses such as a myth. The Maryland Legislative Archives recorded events within Maryland during that conflict. Their public proclamations and petitions to Congress records the greatest crush on the civil liberties that has ever occurred against a free state in the Union. The recorded constitutional abuses against our citizens will make any patriot, past, present, or future, stir. In their last proclamation before their arrest, they stated, "If this could happen in Maryland, what state could ever be truly free?" Members of our council make no mistake, if you remove the Talbot Boys, you are changing history. It would be a statement that the Talbot commissioners in 1914 were wrong by allowing these men a place of honor. You will be participants in promoting a history of hate in Talbot County, and you will be denying the actual history of a great state. Though your heart may be tempted to assist a social, just and social cause of today, you will be denying many future generations a rich and just history from which they can learn. Let truth be the beacon which your heart and mind must follow, and let that beacon shine bright for future generations.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot, Mr. Callahan. I appreciate it.
Okay, our next caller is calling in from a 443-786 number. Caller, begin.
Yeah, hi, this is Cindy Steedman. Can you hear me?
Could you say your last name again, Cindy, please?
Yeah, Steedman, S.T.E.E.D.M.A.N.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Please, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just calling in because I would like to express my support for the Talbot Boys Monument or a unity monument. I think the monument deserves to remain on the courthouse grounds. We must preserve and protect all memorials honoring all our veterans, which includes the Talbot Boys. I have an ancestor listed on the Talbot Boys Monument. He, along with all the boys noted on the monument, mattered to me, and I will, I will, I shall continue to defend their honor. Please leave the Talbot Boys Monument on the ground or replace it or add a unity monument, whichever, but I do support the Talbot Boys Monument. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate you calling in. Do we have any more callers?
Okay, we do have another caller. Caller is a 410-819 number. Please begin.
Good evening, Council President Callahan and members of the council. I'm Lynn Milky, and I'm calling to encourage the Talbot County Council to enact an administrative resolution for the completion and creation of a Civil War unity memorial. Augment the existing statue by adding a Union soldier adjacent to the existing Confederate soldier. Build up rather than tear down. A unity memorial fulfills the original approval by the county council in 1913 and 14, a Confederate and a Union statue, which would now include the Talbot County CSCT veterans and memorialize the Unionville 18. Why should recognition of them be segregated to only Unionville? Talbot County should, like Kent County, pay tribute to all of our county's Civil War history. "It was a war that forged a nation," as historian James McPherson has written. McPherson, perhaps the preeminent historian of the war, makes a case in his book, The War That Forged a Nation, that our current debates over federal authority, voting rights, citizenship, racial progress are difficult to understand without coming to terms with the 19th century conflict that tore the country apart and the war which, as a consequence, freed 4 million slaves and led to constitutional amendments guaranteeing their rights as citizens. As President Biden said at the memorial ceremony on the Mall for the COVID-19 victims, "To heal, we must remember." Indeed, Councilman Pack said on June 7th of 2016, when he voted that the Talbot Boys statue remain in its existing location and invited the erection of a Union monument commemorating the soldiers, he stated, and this is in the record, "The Talbot Boys statue is not promoting slavery or the values of the Confederacy. It's memorializing young men of Talbot County who fought in battle and died. The Talbot Boys statue is a part of the history of Talbot County, and removing it weakens that story. The Talbot Boys, along with the Union soldiers, Frederick Douglass, the Wy House, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the town that fooled the British, and the newly discovered Hill Community in Easton all tell the story of Talbot County, the good, the bad, and the ugly. If every time we remove a statue, a monument, or book because it offended us, there would be nothing left. Some have said that statues and monuments are symbolic and stir emotions of the observer, and that's fine. We all should be moved and inspired to ensure that the horrors of war, genocide, and slavery never happen again. But tearing down monuments or casting them off in a closet benefits no one. So I applaud the brave men and women who survived the concentration camps and had the courage to say no. Let the camps remain. Let the world see what was done here. For people who forget the mistakes of their past are doomed to repeat them."
Thank you, Mrs. Milky. I appreciate you calling in. Your time is up. Thanks a lot.
And the last person that stood up right now is a 410-200 number. Please begin.
Good evening, counsel. This is Clive Ewing from Easton, Maryland. I want to let you know that I fully support those citizens who have pledged to preserve Talbot history by displaying blue yard signs throughout the county from Cordova, Wy Mills, St. Michael's, Tillman Island, Oxford, Trap, Wendy Hill, Easton, and all communities, farms, and homes in between. These folks are committed to completing the promise from 1914 to erect a monument to all the brave men who fought during the Civil War. It is wonderful to see so many wanting to build up, not tear down, our shared history. Sadly, the positive flow of energy from so many good citizens was marred today by the act of one of our Talbot County councilmen. In his response to a Talbot citizen's letter to offer her support for a unity monument representing all Talbot soldiers in the Civil War, a good-faith proposal to reconcile many disparate points of view, Councilmember Corey Pack wrote, quote, "This myth of a unity statue is just another attempt to promote white supremacy, just another form of hidden racism," unquote. Which implies that this lady and other like-minded folks are effectively white supremacists. This gutter-style mudslinging, particularly from an elected official directed to a constituent, a citizen, a taxpayer, one of our neighbors, it's got to end. This politically-driven narrative is creating division in the community, and it is tone-deaf to so many of us who seek a sensible and inspirational path forward. I insist that council members publicly denounce Mr. Pack's language and censure him, for it is unbecoming a Talbot County councilman and indecent of any public official to utter such filth toward a fellow American who is offering good-faith input to an issue. Counsel, it is time to build up that monument and build up each other, not tear down that monument and not tear down our neighbor. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. I appreciate you calling. Any other callers?
There currently are no other callers wishing to speak.
Okay, well, why don't you stay on the line just in case there's a caller that missed and everything? And what we're going to do is we're going to do council comments. And since we're at this point with council comments, Mr. Pack, you want to go ahead and start us off?
Well, I guess since my name has been invoked so much as even, I guess I should have some reply.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Wow. Look, I get it. I really do. And I do appreciate Ms. Milky and reading my remarks from 2016. And I have said openly to this council and to the public that I was wrong for my vote back then. I was. I did not give the consideration of what the Confederate monument says about us as citizens here in Talbot County and what it promotes. So to that end, again, I did write what she grabbed, that quote is my quote. But since that time, I've had a change of heart and I have a change of thinking regarding a Confederate statue on public property. I'm not saying it should be torn down. I never promoted that in the least. I said it should be removed to another location, but not on public ground, not sitting outside the courthouse here in Easton. That has always been my new position concerning the statue. And regarding the history of not just this statue, but there were many Confederate statues that were put up after the Civil War in the early part of the 20th century. And they lined a lot of the border states here in Maryland, Pennsylvania, and across the nation. And they were put up for the simple purpose of glorifying the Confederacy and what the Confederacy stood for. So I think that we should not delusion ourselves into thinking that Confederacy had won, would have been beneficial for persons of color. It would not have been. And we do know what happened shortly after the Civil War ended in 1877, when President Hayes was given an ultimatum by the southern states to remove the last remaining northern troops from the South and to allow the South to deal with their blacks as they deemed appropriate without interference of the North. And we all know what took place for the next 100 years after that. After that decision was made to go along with that compromise. It was 100 years of Jim Crow laws. It was 100 years of separate but equal. It was 100 years where blacks were lynched, where they were burned, where they were run out of their stores and homes. There are many accounts. Just go on the website and look at it, you know, from Rosewood to Atlanta to Tulsa, Oklahoma. There are many accounts where black citizens who were trying, who were trying to survive, even in the face of Jim Crow, even in the face of separate but equal laws, were then brutalized and run out and burnt out of their homes and their businesses were torched. So this statue does not equate to equality. It does not equate to unity. Because that's not what the Confederacy stood for. It did not stand for United States. And why are we continuing to delusion ourselves and think that that's what the Confederacy stood for? There were winners and there were losers after the war. Those persons who fought for the Confederacy lost. They lost. And I think that, again, I'm repeating myself, but the compromise of 1877 spoke to what they wanted. They did not want unification. They did not want to treat citizens of color equally. They did not. So how can you bond to say that we're looking for unity if you're not, if you're still promoting the symbols of disunity? You can't have it both ways. You know, light and darkness can't share the same space. I'm sorry. And, and my, and my comments to, to the writer today weren't directly at her. They were my comments regarding the topic that she was speaking about, which was the Unity Statue. I didn't call her racist. I didn't call her a white supremacist. I don't know the, I do not know this woman. But regarding the issue that she was speaking about, um, my feeling is, is as stated, that when you try to disillusion, uh, when you try to wrap something up as, as anything other than what the Confederacy stood for, uh, what they fought for, uh, what they died for, um, you're, you're not being transparent and not being honest. So, you know, look, we, we did, there were first things first, and I think the first priority is the elephant in the room, and that, and the elephant is the room, and it's, it's the Confederate statue on the public ground. Before we start talking about what should or should not go there, you know, let's, let's take care of the first business at hand, which is removing the Confederate statue from public grounds and move it to another location. That's the first order of business. You know, the second order of business will, will take place. And look, the Maryland Trust, you know, I, I read the resolution. The state of Maryland is not going to give money to preserve the Confederacy in any way shape or form you dress it up. They're not. They're not. You know, so, um...
Go ahead, get it wrapped up, Mr. PAC, please. Can you, can you get it wrapped up here, please?
I'm, I'm wrapping it up, Mr. Callahan. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the matter.
No problem. No problem.
The coming from my dear.
Okay. No problem. Okay, uh, Mr. Lesher?
I have nothing further this evening.
Okay. Mr. DeVilleo?
Oh, deer. So that's what I'll talk about. Uh, we brought it up, what, twice tonight, talking about deer, um, deer hunting on Sundays and hunting at the airport. Well, and I, I would like, if Mike is still listening or Clay, shoot him over a reminder, any extra deer meat that's harvested out of the airport that doesn't get eaten, uh, would be, is greatly appreciated at the food banks. They love it. They can't get enough ground deer meat there. Uh, and there's a lot of kids, a lot of families that hunt, and deer is a primary food that goes on their table. And of course, as an insurance agent, we, I see plenty of them on the road that I don't like anywhere near the road. So, uh, that's where I'm coming from. But you heard it a lot tonight. There is a lot of deer hunting on the eastern shore. Uh, it, it is one of the, the main proteins that's available for, uh, folks around here. A lot of people live off of that and the geese, though. Um, that's, uh, one thing that, that kept coming up tonight, that I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about the food bank and all the hunters that donate to them. It's been huge. It's been very successful, and I greatly appreciate those stepping up during these times when people need food. Uh, that's an excellent way to, to balance the population of the deer while feeding the people that need the meat. So thank you very much for those who do it.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. That's some good thoughts. Um, uh, Mrs. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, I just want to give my thoughts. Um, what we're witnessing in this country right now is heartbreaking, and it's totally unacceptable. I truly can't believe that people are treating other human beings with such disrespect and contempt. Civil conversation and civil disagreements have been overtaken by uncivil discourse and protests masquerading as civil disobedience. While I and the citizens here in Talbot County can't fix what is wrong in this whole country, we can come together and heal our community. Everyone has to be willing to learn to live through the middle ground. People on different sides may not like compromising, and they may feel so strongly that their opinion is right that they are unwilling to give up until they get their way entirely. But that refusal to listen to each other solves nothing. Bullying, threatening, and especially personal attacks will only further divide us. There is a way to portray accurately the past and to create unity in the present if people will do it. Many have asked why there was not a monument for the Union side. It was approved over 100 years ago, at the same time as the monument for the Confederate side, but no one ever raised the funds to build it. And five years ago, in a work session with the NAACP, they asked for a joint Civil War monument honoring all the soldiers, both Union and Confederate, but no one ever raised the funds to build it. And about four years ago, a man named Rich Merrill contacted the council members individually with a concept sketch to create a Unity Monument with statues of both the Union and the Confederate Boys, side by side, wrapped up in a big American flag. Things in the country were relatively quiet at the time, and none of us pursued it. And now we find ourselves in a time where no one can even communicate with one another. There seems to be no point to having more meetings and work sessions because there's nobody willing to compromise. What I have had prepared with the input of many citizens and groups, that administrative resolution that has not been introduced yet proposes such a Unity Monument, something that preserves what is here and tells a more complete story of the Civil War history by building upon and not tearing down. People have been tearing each other down enough. I think it's time to stop and bring unity to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Appreciate it. Um, so, so I'll bring this to an end. Um, I want to bring it on a positive note. Um, I respect everybody's thoughts and feelings. I respect the, uh, the callers. Um, it is, is, uh, everybody's passionate about a lot of things. But we're gonna have to come together, and we're gonna have to work this out. And there's just a lot of ways that we can go about this. Um, but right now, let's talk about the good things. I, I want to stick with what's important in, in Talbot County. We've got sewer to do. We've got, um, we've got EMS stuff. We've got a lot of great things that are happening, okay? So let's try, as a council, to really concentrate on the good things. We all heard, we've been years trying to get, um, sewer to some of these communities, okay? That means a lot to me, okay? If we can try to achieve some of these good things to get our residents something good. So I, I, I'm, I'm asking you, as, as a council, if we can sort of, sort of, you know, with all the emailing back and forth and, and, and all that, if, if we can, if we can settle that down a little bit, I'd appreciate it, um, and not have this sort of back and forth stuff. Um, you know, I, I think that all these emails back and forth, sometimes people read them wrong and, and, and read into them, and there's a lot of things that are said in the emails that are very, very offensive to people. So, you know, if you have your thoughts and feelings, I think many times I've said this before, if you're that passionate about it, call the person up and meet the person. It means a lot more to the person if you actually meet them and don't email them. So it, it means a lot, okay? I mean, everybody knows, and I've met people so far, and it's so much more appealing and so much more when you're trying to develop relationships one-on-one with people, okay? So I, I would recommend that to council and recommend, you know, stop the emailing, the back and forth and, and, you know, when, when somebody tends to, to rub you the wrong way, we're elected officials, elected officials, we need to sometimes step above all this stuff, okay? And do what's right, okay? And that's on everybody's side. It's not one person I'm talking about. It's just in general. I've, I'm the one that's gotta lead us, okay? So I'm asking council to be respectful to everybody, and let's move on and not, let's get hung up on some of this stuff and start battling back and forth with, with, um, the citizens, okay? So let's just do the best we can, be respectful to everybody, and move on with this stuff. All right, council. I've said enough. Glad to do my best. All right, so, um, Mr. Lesher, are you still there? My, uh, is, is my vice president still there?
Right here, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, buddy. Can you, uh, can you pull us to the end?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourned into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
Still moved. Second. All right, guys. Thanks a lot. Good job.